All right. And tonight on our agenda, really only one thing to discuss. And that is the proposal from the DPW to amend city ordinances, Chapter 12, Stormwater Management. So Greg, do you want to give us a little bit of background on this and maybe tee it up for us?
Yep. So in order for the city to comply with the EPA mandates of our MS4 stormwater permit, we have to update the language in our city ordinance regarding stormwater. And Ty and Bond, Tracy, that's on the meeting, has been here, has been helping us along with this process and getting the language updated just to be in compliance with new federal regulations. So.
Okay. And so we have this, I don't know if you guys can, I think you can probably see, I don't know how big it is. But um, so this is kind of like a redlined version that we have. And it seems like the blue is is new language. It seems like cleaned up some some language in here. And and red is a mix of changes and new language.
No, we, um, this is Tracy. I'm with Ty and Bond. And we developed that. There were a couple of us here who reviewed it. So had to get a couple of different colors, but you're absolutely correct. There's, because we were going through the ordinance, there's some cleanup language that that occurred. But the bulk of the changes, and you'll see them as you scroll deeper into the document, are in order, as Greg had said, to meet the new MS4 permit requirements. What happened was, uh, so the the Niptys Municipal Storm Sewer Separate System, the MS4 General Permit was updated as of 2016. And in that permit, they had some changes that needed to kind of go down to the municipalities and get pulled into the municipal regulations. We held off, and I'll say all communities held off on making these changes because some additional edits came out to the general permit. I think those became in effect as of January of this year. So I guess the the only other thing I'll add for background is that Mass DEP is currently updating its stormwater management standards. So some of the cleanup language here is to take out some of the specificity. Because the the previous document referenced, you know, the direct standards that Mass DEP had in place. And those are changing and they are still in flux. They haven't been finalized. And EPA, in their general permit, has required that municipalities have these new changes to their bylaws in place by June 30th of this year. And Mast DEP is behind on that schedule. So instead of referencing Mast DEP's standards specifically, we we just include them by reference.
Okay. And so does that mean our deadline is June 30th on this? Okay.
It is. That being said, you know, you'll have a, or the city needs to submit an annual report at the end of September in which they will document the compliance with the permit. So, you know, nobody will be checking until then.
And they they won't punish us too seriously if we miss that deadline?
I, you know, you're, if you're making progress and it's on the agenda, I don't see them punishing you for for this.
Okay. Because I think that I can speak for the rest of the committee that this is not exactly in our wheelhouse. Which is why it's important for us to have you guys here to kind of guide us through this. But and so as I'm, as I'm scrolling down, it looks like the definitions got updated.
Yep.
And this was, this is the definition of the the MS4 permit right here.
Correct.
Okay. And so I'm still kind of, I mean, it seems like this is, this stuff right here seems really easy. It seems like as we get further down, yeah, go ahead, Councilor Eric.
Just a quick question, because the one thing you just scrolled past is the one main, like, I I read the whole thing. And so you, I just wanted to understand why storm drain system was removed as a definition, but it's used pretty pervasively throughout the the ordinance. And I was just trying to understand why it's removed, because you make reference to it numerous times. Unless that was a mistake.
No, um, I believe we removed that because if you go back under Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System or Municipal Storm Drain System, that is generally the language that's used throughout.
Okay.
So it was redundant.
Yep. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. So is there any, is there a particular part of this that we should be focusing in on?
So we'll, we'll start here. Redevelopment is probably one of the key definition changes. And that is changed because EPA has a different definition of redevelopment than Mast DEP did in their initial stormwater management standards. So that was a change here. Yeah. If you want to just keep scrolling and we can, you know, talk about what what changes are made, that's probably going to be the easier way to go at it.
Yeah. I mean, that looks just like, you know, like these little things are just word.
Yep.
Yeah. And it looks like there was an addition of exemption.
Yep.
So they still have to comply with the ordinance. That makes sense.
Yeah.
And.
And this was, yeah, so this references back to including EPA's requirements and not just referencing back to Mast DEP.
Okay.
So EPA now has some tools on their website that reference best management practices that have different nutrient removals. So that's with that.
Okay.
Next thing is just updating on 1228. Yeah, next page. We added a provision for public comments because that's something that's being required by EPA. They want to have some procedure that public comments can be incorporated. That's more cleanup language. Inspections was modified to confirm that a qualified inspector should be doing the inspections. So it provides some definition around who that is.
Okay.
More cleanup language, I think on these next pages. This last little bit here, consultant fee, that just references back to the mass general law that allows the city to to authorize an applicant to pay for peer reviews.
Okay.
So now we'll get into some of the more, I guess, meatier parts of this. So stormwater management facilities. Again, this kind of goes back to what I had discussed about us taking out the specific requirements. So if you look at that deleted language, that was all, those are DEP's current stormwater management standards. And so we had, previously, they were just referenced. And so now we kind of, I'll say loosen that language up a little bit. So it talks about some of the general provisions of the stormwater management standards. But knowing that those are going to change, we didn't want to spell out the direct requirement anymore.
Okay. And and do you anticipate that that's something that we're going to have to come back to and add to this later on? Or is, do you think this is?
Hopefully not. That's the reason for making these changes so that when DEP does come out with their new standards, you don't have to come back and change it.
Okay.
And we just added in some additional waste definitions. Again, per, that's per EPA.
Yep.
The next couple of pages are just cleanup and then we get into some more.
This right here.
Yeah. So these refer back to performance standards for projects that are that are coming for stormwater permits. So the first section addresses low impact development. That's something that's being pushed by EPA to, you know, have just more environmentally sensitive development. That should be developers' first options to look at. And then the next references back to the DEP Stormwater Standards Handbook, you know, whatever, whatever version that happens to be. These next two sections, the Performance Standards for New Development and for redevelopment, reflect the changes for, that have come from EPA. So this is where the DEP Stormwater Standards and what was previously in East Hampton's ordinance and EPA disconnect. So when EPA came out with a new permit, they had additional performance standards that they were requiring for new development and for redevelopment. So that's why this language changes, because that references back to the more stringent EPA requirements.
Okay.
And then number four in this section allows for projects that if, for redevelopment projects. So, you know, say if one of the mills needed to be redeveloped or had a redevelopment program under our previous standards for stormwater management to meet DEP and EPA at the time, you just had to make things better. Now EPA has like strict requirements for certain pollutant removals. So if it's not possible to do it on site, there's an option to have redevelopment projects, identify an off-site parcel where they can meet that mitigation. And that's what this language is all about.
Now, we do have some mill rehabilitation happening right now in the city. I mean, are we anticipating that this is going to? With this change, is that going to put an increased burden on that redevelopment, do you think?
Not on anything that's already in the permitting process.
Okay.
So you, you know, this doesn't become in in effect until you guys vote on it.
Okay. All right. So because I think it's probably, as we kind of move forward with this, I mean, that is a consideration, I imagine, because I know that the One Ferry Street project is, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces. And I, I just want to make sure that we're not throwing in a giant bill on top of that before they get moving. But I guess that's just something that we'll look into. Okay, cool.
Question.
Yeah, go for it.
Tracy, I just want to make sure, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. But it makes sense to me that redevelopment sites kind of assume that there might be substandard or aging infrastructure there. And so there's kind of lower requirements in terms of the load. They're talking about the 90% 90% load for new development versus 80% for redevelopment. Is that kind of the the idea behind that? Or?
So I'm going to put on my planner hat for a second. You know, when, when you have existing development, you know, ideally, you're pushing new development to reuse existing brownfield sites. And I use brownfield in general or grayfield, however you want to term it. But but sites that are already somehow developed so that, you know, you can better preserve greenfield sites. So I think that is a nod to help make it a bit less onerous for for re sites to be redeveloped. So you know, you can kind of better direct sites or new development to, you know, sites that perhaps aren't being totally utilized. This is, this is one of those provisions that, you know, I think Mast DEP and EPA were, were trying to kind of identify a more common ground for that very reason. But I think this is, this is where EPA is is standing. And they want to just make sure that from a water quality perspective, development on redevelopment sites is is also improving the stormwater that's that's running off to resources.
Okay. And this is the old.
And this is what was deleted.
Right. That was probably more specific. Looks like it.
Yep.
Okay. And these are new?
These are, yes. So item 11 is becau- this, this, again, because of the EPA permit. You're in the Long Island Sound's total maximum daily load envelope. So for, you know, for projects in the, in East Hampton, the BMPs ought to be optimized for nitrogen. And there's a few other water bodies, I think, that have TMDLs. I don't have the list at my fingertips. But when there's projects within their watershed, they should, that any stormwater best management practices should try and remove that pollutant as much as it can. So that's what 11 is. And 12 is just a requirement to make sure that they're as built submitted within two years. And you, you had a provision earlier in the bylaw that talked about as built. But this provides the EPA required timeframe.
Okay. Let's keep moving.
I think we've gotten through the the bulk of it. These are, you know, just more clarification language.
Right. And that's.
And that's pretty much it. We had a couple of cleanup comments in the illicit discharge, but.
Sure.
Right there.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
So before I get into any other questions, just, just for context, it kind of feels like we have to do this or we're going to get in trouble, right?
You are being required to do this by the EPA general permit, yes.
Okay.
And we're not putting forward anything more than what's required.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Well, that kind of does it, right? Like.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I, I think you're right, Tom. This, I mean, this is required. And so like, just for the sake of, and Greg, maybe you can answer this. I don't even, I don't even know if this. But if, let's just say we punted on this. We said, hey, yeah, we'll, we'll keep it in committee, but we're just going to hold it here. And I'm not saying for any particular reason I would want to do that, but I'm just curious. Where would that put us? Would we be fined by the EPA? Would we, would that get you in trouble?
We could potentially, but I, it probably wouldn't become an issue until we submit in November.
Right.
When, when our report is due, so.
Okay. And these are all, these are all requirements that the EPA are basically putting on everybody. So everybody has to do the same.
Yes.
Process. Okay. All right. That pretty much answers my question. Now, Greg, what do you think about the, with the new language? Do you, and you know, knowing about One Ferry Street or, and you know, any of the other potential redevelopment projects we have in East Hampton, do you think that this could potentially add any sort of excess cost or anything like that that we might want to just think ahead on here?
Well, I mean, any, you know, most, most environmental regulations that come out do add extra costs and, you know, challenges to, to, to any, to any, whether it's redevelopment or a new, new development. So unfortunately, it's just kind of the, the environment we're in. It's important to protect the environment and follow, you know, the requirements of these permits we have. And I mean, yeah, there will be, it is financially burdensome for anyone doing any developing, but it's all, it's, you know, it's necessary to protect the environment, so.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's what I figured. I just want to make sure that we don't do anything that's going to jeopardize the project. You know.
No, I, I don't think we will here. I mean, most everything that that's happening over there is already permitted.
Okay. All right. That's good to know. All right. Good. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like sort of like weird because it's like, there's so much here that I feel like I only half understand. But I also am not sure about like the utility of actually like coming to, like, ask people to explain every single thing to me, if in fact, like, this is either what we do or we get fined.
Right. That's a good point. And and as far as timing, you know, I mean, I, I think that we could see this done before the June 30th deadline. If if that's something that is helpful. Because we do have a, we have a special, we have a second meeting in June. So that means that we could potentially put a public hearing in for this and that second hearing in June, which then would, would get us under the the June 30th deadline. So, you know, I, I think that that might be a way to go. I don't know. I don't, so, so we, we used Tracy as a consultant on this. And we also worked with the city engineer. And Greg, I imagine you were involved with this in some capacity. And and so, and everybody from that end feels comfortable with its current state. Okay.
We, we, it's, we kind of just have to put it through. We're not, like I said earlier, we're not putting any, anything more, any more through than what's required by EPA, so.
Okay. All right. It's good to know. Well, it doesn't look like we're, we have a lot of options here. So, you know, I, I think that, I think that just because of the nature of this, I think that this is something that we can put forward. And I'm happy to entertain a motion to, to recommend this to the, to the full council.
To move.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second, to recommend this proposed ordinance to the full council. Owen?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So what we'll do is next Wednesday, I will, I will set the public hearing for this in the second June meeting. And let me see if I can tell you the exact date on that. It is, let me get to June here. The 16th. So 16th, and the, the, we have, we have a few public hearings that night. So probably I'll try to see if we can do this one first, because this one is pretty easy. So, all right. Thanks. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Yeah. All right. So I, and we don't have any other new business, so I'd be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn.
Talk about the old business too, if you want.
Yeah, I mean, I, I did notice that in the packet, we, I think we have some solicitor feedback on the ordinances that we have.
Oh.
I didn't see that. I don't know how I didn't see that.
I think if you scroll up.
Maybe it was because there was 170 pages.
Yeah, because like the entirety of everything ever published by the Cannabis Control Commission is in the packet as well.
Yeah.
But yeah, like.
On the housing amendments, or is it?
And Owen's cannabis.
Oh, really? So I did not know that. I wish someone had. Are you sure that wasn't the old, the old comments? Because I don't think it's been sent back to him.
Well, I'm, I don't know. Maybe it's just the housing stuff. The housing stuff is below.
Okay. Let's take a look at that then, if I can.
Where is, uh, here, let me find, let me pull this up.
Okay, so here's the housing stuff. Okay, final draft, Ordinance and City Attorney Review, May 12th.
Yeah, it's weird. I figured we would have gotten this directly.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's, I didn't, frankly, I didn't go over these materials because I thought that they were just what we had already reviewed.
Right.
I did too. And then I was scrolling, trying to find the thing for the meeting. And I stumbled upon this.
Interesting. Let's see if I can find.
So blue, red track changes are me and Jeff. Blue track changes are the solicitor.
Okay, so it's, just.
That's fine. That's just formatting.
As determined by planning board.
That's fine. Makes clear the planning board and to the board, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't see anything with the cannabis stuff, by the way, just while you look through.
Here's one where I have a little bit of an issue.
Okay.
It.
Oh.
12% shall be affordable instead of 10% must be affordable. And I think at that point, it should say at least 10% shall be affordable.
Okay.
What page is that?
Somebody wanted to do 12%.
8.34.
Oh, I mean, which page in the packet, do you know?
They're not numbered.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. I, I've caught up to you guys, so.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump off, guys. I think.
Yeah, you're good, Greg. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Get it.
No problem. Have a good night.
Yeah, take care.
Okay, so you said 8.5, 8.54, you say?
Uh, 8.34.
Okay.
8.341. That's, I know I'm doing this, but like, it's just sort of minimal. Do you actually think you could maybe slightly zoom in on that text, Salem?
Let's see if I can, because normally I can just like use my mouse to, oh wait, I can tap in, I think, on it. Is it not, I don't think it works when I'm. I can download it. And that way, I can download it. Because I was just. Oh, now I can tell you the page, Owen.
No, there, it's, 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 yeah.
It's somewhere around here.
It's page 101.
Right here, right here, right here. And then let's zoom in. All right. So how's that look?
Oh, perfect.
Oh, okay. No, yep.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, so you think, so at least 10% of the units shall be affordable?
I think that is, unless it says it somewhere else.
Our incomes at E4?
Yeah. Yeah, I just think it needs to specify at least, because if somebody wanted to do more, that's fine. I mean, I don't think anyone's going to actually misunderstand.
Well, yeah, I think, hmm. But I don't, yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think at least is implied, but I won't argue with you. I think, I think I'm not going to, you know, if you feel that that term needs to go in there, I think that that clarifies.
Well, yeah, I mean, it is so minor, but when the word, when it says the word must, that means that it, I, somehow that in my mind, that means that it shouldn't be more. And when you say shall, it's, it makes it feel like it's a hard deadline. I agree that it's at least implied.
I'll roll with adding the language. It's, it's whatever, whatever helps your baby grow, Tom.
All right. Then, yeah, that's one little suggestion. I can, I can figure that out.
That's, that's a pretty easy fix.
Yeah. And then. Yeah, I'm trying to figure.
So is the blue, is that the solicitor's?
The blue is the solicitor, yeah.
Okay. Tom's surprised. So you didn't get a copy of this?
Yeah, neither did I.
Yeah, most of this just looks like cleanup.
Yeah, that's what it seems like. Yeah, that's what it seems like. And like, everywhere it says must, it goes, it turns to shall.
Yeah. So, yeah, that that seems fine.
Done.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, it's just cleanup.
Do we not have, um, ADU, um, I, um, defined, where we can just write ADU, we have to write accessory dwelling unit?
Oh, I think we have it defined, yeah, I don't know what that was.
I don't care, I was just curious.
He might, he might have just wanted it at the beginning of the section.
Yeah. And then that's fine.
Yep. Doesn't look like he touched any of this.
And that's all, and that's it, so, yeah, okay, that's all, I just wanted to go over that, um, because I noticed it today, but, uh, yeah, so it's just that that one tiny little, uh, which I can make, I just, I'm going to ask Jeff for the word version of this, so I can just.
Yeah.
And then I don't honestly think that requires, like, any further thing, but I'll, I'll just get that, um, set up, but I, yeah, that's all.
Cool, all right, and, yeah. All right, and, well, when you said he didn't, we didn't get any, uh, specific feedback on the.
I just looked at it, I mean, you know, we had a pretty extensive feedback before, back up there, I didn't see it, anything, other than all of the stuff from the CCC, which I I think I've probably read a million times already from my courses.
Right.
Uh, yeah, I don't see anything here, so.
Like it. No, I, um, yeah, it doesn't look like there's any.
Okay.
All right, well, at this point, I guess, unless there's anything else, I'd be, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right, all right, motion in a second, Tom Peak.
All right.
And Owen's there.
Yes.
And I vote yes too. Hey, that was, hey, that's pretty good, good work, guys, look at that.
Yeah.
Language changes that someone else does the work for, and we just nod our heads.
Yeah, 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 because I I understood about, you know, not all of that. Anyway, all right, guys, have a good one, we'll see you
You too.
Yeah, soon.
Yeah, take care, everyone.
Take care, everybody.